Very well.
But any ladies and gentlemen, in the meantime, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I take this opportunity to thank everybody for coming. Again, I will say to say that again, if you have a cellphone, please make sure that you put it in airplane mode or any other mode you use. And those that are expecting it to use it for emergency, just continue the way you are. Thank you. Tonight, we're having a public hearing. Board of selection will be holding a public hearing on Monday, March 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Early Childhood Center, 77 Ransfield Lane, Barrington, New Hampshire, on the issuance of building permit in 476 Micah Point Private Road, map 118 lot 0080. Oliver Bennett, is anybody here present to speak to that, please?
I'm Oliver Bennett.
Suzanne, you're gonna take care of that for him, please?
Mr. Bennett is gonna demolish the house that's currently there and put up a modular. Peter Cook went out and inspected the road. The road was snow covered, so he was really unable to take measurements and view the road. But he suggests granting the building permit, and he'll conduct a road inspection in the spring. I think he has since been out there and was able to see the width of the road. The planning board also reviewed the matter. They have no objection. There were no pending projects or conditions that would hinder the issuing of a building permit. The board recommends that Mr. Bennett repair any damage that occurs to the road during construction. And if he's not already a member of the road association, to join the road association. And I think... That is it.
Suzanne, is Mr. Bennett aware of all these conditions?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Suck a hot cup?
Are you currently already a member of the road association?
Yes.
Okay. And the building that you're tearing down here currently is living here?
Yes.
Okay, and you're putting up a new?
Modular.
Very good. Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comment?
No.
Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. The board has recommendations?
Motion to accept the building permit or motion to issuance of building permit on map 118 lot 0080.
Do I have a second, please? We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. If you would issue the public?
I'll have the board sign this tonight. It'll be available tomorrow. I have to work the polls part of tomorrow, so when?
His mother was gonna pick it up at nine o'clock, she told me.
Huh?
His mother was gonna pick it up at nine o'clock. If worse comes to worse, I can wait, and they can sign it tonight, and I can take it with me.
Okay.
That works for everybody?
You want to go?
However it works, I mean, we could get it Wednesday or whatever.
Oh, okay, because your mother was planning on coming in at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, we could move it back.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We'll take care of that outside.
Alright.
Thank you. Next public hearing we have, the public hearing is on per RSA 4114A Sale of Town Owned Land Redemption Way. Yes, we have one select person, select person there that's gonna reclusive himself. Please note, this is Redemption Road, not Redemption Way. It's a different.
Yes, sir.
Turbo Camp Incorporated is planning to build a 32,000 square foot building of the training center, tool room, and research and development center. They would like to build it on the previous American Legion lot that enters onto Redemption Road through a front lot. As part of the development, they would like to ask the town to remove the lot line that separates the front lot and the American Legion lot. This will enable them to add extra parking as well and a well, and use gravel from the front lot to fill in the building of development. As per the letter dated March 6th, the planning board recommends the sale of these lots. As per the letter dated March 7th, the conservation commission recommends the sale of these lots. I'll open this up for discussions. The board have any discussion on it? Mr. Air?
I'm not against the development of this. I'm for commercial roping this down. I feel that with the wetlands here, the setbacks, there's not enough room there on that lot with the building. As soon as they build up the lot next to it with the ledge, it'd be a useless lot. So that's the class that's involved itself. And I'd rather see Turbo Camp take that whole side and they deal with the whole development. The ledge is up. Because I did an estimate on the end of it, where the cost was up. And if we approve this, that lot's gonna be useless. Go to a building, build on it.
Thank you for comments. Any other comments? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public?
There's no one here for Turbo Camp.
No, there is not. Alright, I'll close the public hearing. How would the board like that? Would you like to sell these two lots to Turbo Camp? Well, just public hearing?
There'll be one more public hearing per 4114A, and the board can make a decision whether to move forward at the next public hearing, which will be in two weeks.
Board, please accept my apology. Do that on the 25th. I'm going to close the public hearing. And if somebody will notify Chief Williams, we're ready for him. Please? Chief, I'd like to say welcome to you and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us use this venue to introduce our newest police officer. I think it's important for the community to get to know their officers. This position is simply filling a vacancy from Lieutenant Mannion's retirement. So with me tonight is Tyler Courier. Tyler has two years' police experience from a neighboring community, so we don't need to send him to the Comanche Police Academy. He's been in our field training program with the deputy chief for the last couple of weeks now, and I've heard nothing but good things about Tyler. Tyler's married, grew up in New Hampshire. He enlisted in the Navy for five years. While in the Navy, he earned the Navy Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War and Terrorism Service Medal, and the Navy Marksmanship Ribbon. Tyler also completed 32 weeks of naval medical training to attain the designation of Hospital Corpsman. Tyler has also achieved an associate's degree and bachelor's degree in criminal justice, graduated with a 3.76 GPA. He's a fine example of today's law enforcement professional, and we're happy to have you. Tyler's actually working. So we have this understanding that he's gonna go, he's gonna stay, and then after, I'm gonna bring him on. Tyler, Barrington's a great town, and the community supports us, so just know that moving forward. Thank you for joining our team. So what I'll go ahead and do is I'll swear you in, so the public can witness you accepting the oath of office, which to me is the highest standard of public trust that they instill into us. So we'll go ahead and raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
Tyler Courier.
Do solemnly and sincerely?
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm?
Swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the town of Barrington, New Hampshire?
As a police officer for the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations?
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire?
Of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help God.
So help God.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. Any comments from the board? You stay here.
I have two comments, and I can go to new business too. Why don't you just hear? Give me him. No, you?
No, no, just.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you, and I look forward to working with Barrington.
Thank you very much.
I was asked by a citizen on June 29th, his daughter's getting married, he wants to have fireworks. Does he go to you, or does he go to the clerk? Or commission?
Starts with the town. So he'd start with John or Connor?
Yes, starts with John or Connor, and we'll do it just the way that gentleman did on July 4th. Okay? Thank you for that comment. Dan, thanks for working on that. Alright, moving on. A public comment. Let me remind everybody, a public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes, and the maximum individual can speak is three minutes. And if the individual needs more time, I'll ask a vote from the town. Is there any public comment, please?
Just like to compliment the highway department for the work that?
Please get closer to the thing. We have so much trouble hearing all of us.
See what happens when I get? I'd just like to compliment the highway crew on the work that they do. These small storms take a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I don't think they hear the word "thank you" that much.
Appreciate that. You're absolutely correct on that. We've had a fine group that's gone out. You know, the only disturbing fact is, is that I wish they had a Roman Blaze one to go by the house to don't wake people, other than that, I have no fun.
That's fine.
Suck a hot cup?
I had encouraged members of Barrington, the residents, to be able to ask any questions that they have and to receive factual answers about any of the warrant articles. Would you like that to take place during this portion of the meeting, Chairperson?
Yeah, we have public comment right now. I think it is time. I also have shared, but I did not comment on any of the comments coming on that. So I noticed that you was a helping hand on that, and I appreciate that.
So if anyone has questions about warrant articles that they'll be looking at tomorrow, please feel free to ask them.
Please step up. State your name, please, and your address.
Don Bueker from 2186 Franklin Pierce Highway. So I probably missed some of this, but I figured I'd come and ask when I were late. Has there been any discussion about the operating costs of the new library being larger, and is there any increased staffing associated with that?
The answer to your staffing is yes, they realize they have to do the staffing. Please, you have to sit in front of the stand, there's a mic, we can hear you better. That has been discussed, and the library is looking into that. As far as the additional costs, they realize it's there, but they don't know what additional cost they're going to need until after they see how the systems that they're putting in run.
And if I may, Chair?
Please.
The budget for this year is up for a vote for the townspeople. The building, any additional cost that they may have, operating costs, that wouldn't need to be added until the next year's budget. They have determined that it's difficult to estimate exactly what changes would need to be made, but for budget reasons, they'll be able to adjust their budget for the year that they would enter the building, if that makes sense?
Yep.
So this budget that's being passed along with the rest of the warrant, whether or not the library passes, that budget is for the building they're in, because that's the building moving in this year.
With regards to the town hall building and the funds that are being used to fund that, I appreciate all the work that you all do to have that savings account, if you will, knowing that it's much larger than expected or higher than the average. What will happen with that money if the town hall is not approved?
I'd be happy to field that. So the same thing that happened last year when the select board's effort for a capital reserve for a town hall failed, it stays in fund balance. So that unreserved fund balance is, all unexpended appropriations by default are added to that unreserved fund balance, and all unanticipated revenue. So by default, at the end of the year, anything, some people call it a surplus, anything that's unexpended from the budget ends up in the unappropriated fund balance. And if any warrant article that's funded from that fund balance fails, it remains in fund balance. And so in New Hampshire, no expenditure can be made without an appropriation from the governing body, which is the people of Barrington. So very likely, there's little that would happen to that money until the voters were asked to use it for something, if that makes sense.
So the voters would have to be asked to return that to the voters at some point? That would be an option or future expenses?
That's probably the one small exception. So the select board during tax rate setting, the select board has some control over using certain portions of fund balance for the tax rate setting, which would essentially be buying down the tax rate. The school, as an alternative, the school is unable to hold much of a fund balance at all. And by law, any unexpended appropriations in the school is automatically returned back to the taxpayers in the way of buying down the tax rate. That's not the law for the town, it's the opposite. During tax rate setting, fund balance can be used to buy down the tax rate. One of the measures of financial stability for a community is a stable tax rate. In the town of Barrington, this select board and seemingly previous select boards have focused on maintaining that stable tax rate, and it really hasn't risen or dropped much. What, buying down the tax rate with a large sum of money, say, take that $1 million to put towards the town hall, buy down the tax rate? That gives you a big valley for this year, and then you have a big mountain, a big spike next year, because you have to make up for it. And so you don't just need the $1 million that you're buying down the tax rate with as revenue, but you need $2 million to come up with that, to make up for that $1 million. And so you end up down here, and you end up up here afterwards. So it's kind of complicated, and there is some latitude during tax rate setting, but any appropriation for spending that money requires a vote of the voters.
Can you please talk about the percentage from the state police, Connor?
So currently, so the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration recommends between 8% and 17%. The select board targets 13.5%. Right now, the town of Barrington is at 17.2%. The few things in recent history that have contributed to that fund balance rising, one has been financial responsibility on part of the town, working within the budget that the town's been given and returning a good portion of that back. The other big part of it is we're in strong economic times. Unanticipated revenue, the past three years, has been higher than expected. And a lot of the taxes, the property tax payments have been, percentage has been a lot higher, given the strong economic times.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Nice to hear that.
Yes, alright.
To the best of my knowledge, the selectmen and the select board over the years have always locked down the tax rate.
Dan, you had a comment?
Yes, God forbid. We had another storm and stuff. We did some of our budget, but we had to tap into it if we could, because of our emergency, to be honest.
I understand.
So we just can't spend it, we don't.
It was just growing a lot, so I didn't know what would happen if we didn't vote to spend it on something.
Right.
Are you clear, sir, on the fact that if we paid the budget down this year, and then next year, we would still have to make up for the difference, we would be almost double? Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, good.
And then one last thing, I know there's been a lot of talk about the town hall. I have to believe that you guys believe it's the right size, given all the different things that have been proposed over the years. What, I haven't heard, how long do you expect this building to meet the needs of the town?
So the estimate is to meet the needs of the town for 50 or more years. This particular lot is conducive to expansion, whether that's expansion of a town hall or other municipal infrastructure. And that's one of the benefits of this law. It was important to this select board to not, given the previous failures, and so, you know, the select board feels like they owe it to the voters to bring them something different every time they're told no. And so this project is different, and to a large extent, I think, for that reason. And looking at the needs of the town now, and where the needs of the town are going, and specifically including technology improvements, the just under 10,000 square feet is where the board landed in the plan is for at least.
Great. Sorry, one more question. Just to make sure that with this agreement with the developer, there are no side agreements, special agreements, associated with accepting this land from the developer for getting approvals or anything like that?
Yeah, so that's definitely a fair question, and the answer is absolutely and unequivocally no. This, I think it?
No strings attached?
No. So this shouldn't be represented as anything more than a philanthropic effort from somebody that has developed a few projects in town, recognized the need for the town. Admittedly, the developer, you know, understanding that, you know, you don't give something for nothing, admittedly, the benefit for the developer of having a lot, a parcel, a commercial lot, and understanding that this is a lot with right next to it is a road to what would be 50 homes, the benefit to a developer selling those lots in the back, those house lots in the back, driving through municipal infrastructure opposed to other commercial infrastructure. So the benefit to the developer isn't at any cost to the residents of Barrington, it's simply he's made it clear that he wants to make sure that the commercial lots out front are conducive to folks driving back to the residential lots, and understanding that municipal infrastructure is about as vanilla as you can get for a commercial property.
Okay, I just wanted to know if there were any agreements, like, there has been in the past, so, thank you.
No, absolutely not. Valid question, and thanks for giving us an opportunity to do that.
Just one last item for you, is that the housing in the back, everybody is kind of confused with different types of housing, just because this says low income. It's low income, and the house is planned on being sold, starting at $250,000. So that gives you an idea of what's gonna happen. I know, but that's what the smallest one, he said was gonna happen, would be at $250,000. Dan is telling me it's, they will go higher. But that's the minimum he's going to charge.
It's not like low income means?
Well, in fact, I guess the standard just sits right there. I mean, the way it's set up right now, you go that there, there's just some people that work here in town that are single, not married, but single, and they wouldn't qualify for a house. It's just a shame, if that's how we have to live it. You have any other questions, sir?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking, we appreciate it. Dan, you had a comment?
No, Connor explained it very clearly.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Just for the gentleman, is this on? Hello? There. Okay. There is, this has been going through with the planning board as well, so the planning board has been reviewing what the development will look like in the back, how many house slots would be in there, what that all is. And even from that end, as the representative from the select board on the planning board, because we don't want the optics to be skewed, I've been recusing myself from that process as well. So I can assure you, there's definitely nothing that would be, seem as kind of backdoor side deals along the way, and if you do want to see the plan, I do have it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of our meeting. Next, we have a review of the minutes from February 11th and from February 25th. We'll take February 11th first. Any comments from the board?
I have a comment, I just want to say thank you to the gentleman for asking questions, because we don't usually get good questions.
That is very nice. Yes, yep. We're on February 11th, any comments? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, miss.
I have a second, I think. Mr. Air has a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a meeting from February 25th. Any comments? We have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Just a minute, second it. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Move on to staff reports. Dan, it's up to you now.
Fantastic. First, I'd like to say welcome to Officer Courier. Glad to have him aboard, I've heard nothing but good things so far. So as per my report, first item on the docket right now is the proposed meeting schedule for the balance of this year. I sent out a copy of everybody of the draft last week. Typically, the meetings are on the second and fourth Monday of every month, keeping with tradition. The only other major change, so I know some of the feedback from the budget process last year was we got to the end and it felt tighter time, and some of those meetings lasted a long time. Additionally, this year, that last Monday in December, which we would typically have a meeting, is December 23rd. So I moved the schedule up two weeks from where it would be traditionally. The first goal of that was to add one extra meeting, so we didn't end up crunched for time at the end. And the second thing that that did was put in a hope that we might not have to meet on that 23rd of December. So the proposed first budget presentation would be on September 23rd, and the select board budget finalization would be proposed for December 16th. And that gives us a little bit of room if things were to come up or take a little bit longer. So that's the only major change, and open for discussion.
Comments, please?
I just have one meeting.
So over the summer, definitely, looking back, so again, historical perspective is my strong suit, but looking back, it did seem like there were a few years where some of the summer months only had one meeting. The good thing is, is we can always cancel a meeting. I see a value in having a set schedule opposed to adding meetings, but that'll be a decision pretty folks.
Because there's been, in the past, there's been several times where two select persons were on vacation at the same time, that being is cancelable, and there wasn't enough town business to handle for other months, that's usually what happens. So is everybody satisfied with leaving two and then deleting them as we go? I think we should look at the start of the budget a little bit earlier. That's how I feel about it. Does anybody have comments on that? You want to just leave it the way it is? I'll do it.
I would suggest leaving it as is, I have a speaking suspicion that things are gonna go a bit smoother this year than maybe they have in the past years.
Thank you very much. Jay, you got a comment?
This is very transparent. This is new, and I think it's from someone. Thank you.
Very nice.
You're welcome.
So do you need a motion from us, or?
I would, yep. If this is the schedule that you'd like, I'd like a motion to approve it. And again, like with any schedule, it can be amended throughout the year, but planning out ahead, I think this gives us something good to work from, and if we need to make adjustments, we can, but.
So I have a second, Dan.
Alright.
Done.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please continue.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to cover, obviously, as everybody knows, we have the election tomorrow. I wanted to speak briefly about the duties and responsibilities of the select board. So certainly, the moderator and town clerk would love to have anybody there helping, if you're available and willing. Unlike a state election, there's no statutory requirement for you to help at a local election, and that's only required for state elections. So you are able to be there, and would be glad to have, they would be glad to have help, but you don't need to be there. And as for the two on the ballot, you're able to be there, you're able to act as election officials. The one piece you're prohibited from participating in is anything that has to do with ballot handling. So at the end of the night, we're accepting ballots, just make sure you refrain from that. But your presence is definitely welcome. And obviously, no campaigning inside the middle school. Any questions about duties or responsibilities?
No, I'm going to be there for the meeting.
Great.
I'm gonna try to be there before 8:00 also.
I hope to, I have four appointments that are?
In the morning?
In the morning. Well, I intend to be there at 8:00, as far as I can be.
I have meetings most of the day tomorrow, being I've been out of the office four weeks, so.
I understand.
I will be there after 5:30, because that's when my last meeting meets up.
I'm on my way.
Okay, perfect. Moving on, the next item in the report was a few, basically, housekeeping motions that need to be made, and decisions that need to be made from the board relating to the Haley-Rudenstad-Pannish project. So this is a very comprehensive project that has been in the works for many months. And so as the project is coming to completion, there are a few really? there are a few relating to some grants and some easements. There are some decisions that need to be made. In my report, I drafted those motions. Those are distilled down to the five motions that I think the, the board needs to make. If there are questions, certainly John Wallace is here. And if Mr. Wallace would like to speak to any of them specifically, he'd be welcome to.
Can I just throw one thing up right up front?
Please, John, please come up to the microphone.
Just, just a question of nomenclature. As you probably know, Southeast Land Trust is the one that we're sort of handing the ball over to manage the completion of the project. And at least for the moment, referring into it as the goodwill amendment because the actual structuring of the conservation easement for the Haley and Rubenstein and that little town-owned parcel are going to be ideally, it's not entirely sure, but most likely constructed as an amendment to the existing goodwill one. So that should be the title rather than really Haley-Rubenstein.
Thank you for explaining the goodwill portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions, John, before we sit down?
I have a question. So as we talk about calling it the goodwill amendment, current goodwill property is not held by Selt though, correct?
Oh, it is.
Is it?
They hold the conservation easement on the house. It was for Rapid Rivers Conservancy what was initially done, which is that's the original Selt.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I don't remember seeing Selt in any of the original documentation on it. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion, motion to have the town take ownership of the Haley-Crosses tax map 240 lot 17, 249 lot 18, and place the properties into the conservation easement held by Selt as part of the goodwill conservative area. Do I have a second?
Goodwill amendment, is that what?
Goodwill conservation area as part of the goodwill conservation area. Is that going to be satisfactory?
I think it works.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The second one is a motion to have the town take ownership of the Rubenstein parcel tax map 240 lot six.
That's all part of the amendment.
These five motions are required.
Yes, they are. We have to do all five of you gentlemen. Ladies, I know you don't, but we do have some interruptions. Now start again. A motion to have the town take ownership of the Rubenstein parcel, tax map 240 lot six, and place it in the conservation easement to be held by Selt as part of the goodwill conservation area. I made the motion. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A motion to place the town-owned parcel tax map 240 lot five into conservation easement to be held by Selt as part of the goodwill conservation area.
Are you making the motion?
No, I'm not. Dan?
I made the motion.
Dan's making the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to one. I go against it. Next one is a motion to have the town hold the conservation easement on calculated 21 acres of the Parnish parcel tax map 249 lot 19, excluding two acres around the existing home. The owners agreed to allow a small parking area to be placed on a portion of the land of the easement. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second.
What is calculated mean?
That was the CA in front of the 21 acres.
Circa. Circa. Approximately.
Approximately, yeah. It's calculated circa, anyway. Thank you, John. So we have the motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Five oh. The last one, motion to accept a $20,000 grant from the state's Moose Plate Program, a $10,000 grant from the city of Portsmouth, a $10,000 grant from the Fields Pond Foundation, and a $10,000 grant from the Bafflin Foundation in addition to the $190,000 previously accepted. I made that motion. I have a second from Mr. Air. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. It carries. Connor, you're next.
Fantastic. So moving on, the Town Lands Committee has worked on putting together an RFP for a forester to start developing forest management plans for the town-owned land. And this is, this will be part of the process to determine whether it's worth it, whether we have any forest lands that are worth doing a selective harvest, et cetera. I don't believe there's anybody from the lands committee to speak to this. I don't know if Dan attended any of the meetings. The RFP was attached and they are looking for the board's approval of that RFP to send out. John and I worked with them to add the boilerplate language to protect the town. And they would be looking to send this out and, and moving forward. Again, they would need to come back to the board before spending any money. But this would allow them to get an idea of what, to come back with a more informed request from the board in the future.
Discussion, please. Dan?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take that.
I had a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
So my assumption is because this is not part of this year's budget, the RFPs would be more informational gathering only and we would need to place it next year's budget?
Not necessarily to the extent that the, the board would be willing to, would be willing to authorize the expenditure of money for, if they were looking to develop forest management plans. That money could come from the instant fund.
Okay.
There, there are line items in the, the land use budget for, that, that might apply.
Okay.
Small land use.
It's also a requirement as part of the Conservation Commission's moratorium on acquiring land is to manage said properties.
Moratorium on acquiring land?
Yeah. You just buy up all this land and then you don't have a management plan around it. So you have to manage all the land that the town has acquired to put in conservation.
So we have a moratorium?
Do you want me to pick a different word for it?
Well, I said, a moratorium is kind of an official sounding thing, like it's a policy. We have no such policies.
It's part of the agreement. It's part of the agreement is to maintain the lands and maintain them appropriately.
Yes, agree completely.
John, would you please come up to the speaker and say-
So a forest management plan is an appropriate management document for said lands?
Yes, absolutely. 100%.
So then I think a moratorium is appropriate. Thank you.
A moratorium is a policy. The Conservation Commission has adopted no such policy.
If it's written into the documents, John, when you buy the land that you will maintain it, that is a policy.
Yes. Moratorium on prohibiting us from buying future land is a policy which is not taken up.
I didn't realize we talked, no, we didn't talk about not buying land. We're just talking, talking about this.
That's not what I said.
Request for proposals is what we're talking about right now. We're not talking about buying land. He used the emphasis that when we do acquire land, part of the document states that we are required to continue viewing the land to ensure that it's not being misused.
Yeah, agree with that.
As far as I'm concerned, that, that also can be moratorium on how we handle that property.
I have a different interpretation of the word moratorium.
Chairman? I appreciate, yes.
Part of this too, you have to qualify forces when you apply for grants that are available. I don't know any of the grants, but there's, there is grants available.
I appreciate that, but right, but right now, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, but we have a request for the proposal. And if we go up for a proposal, we get it, we review it. And if it's not what we like or what the lands board is not, is not included in what they put in the proposal, then we, then we get to start again and make arrangements for adjustments.
Basically, we're going to put it out so we qualify people.
That's correct. All right, I understand that. Can I just ask a couple of questions?
It's not public comment. Why are we doing this?
No, no, no. We appreciate your comments. A moratorium, when we've agreed that that's the word that we're going to accept, so thank you very much.
I'll even pull back from the use of the word moratorium. I won't even like scratch the word moratorium if that's going to be our-
Make a proposal. So may I ask you a couple of questions about this RFP and things? I have not seen it.
Well, that's, that's, it wasn't sent, it was sent out from the lands committee for us to consider.
There are, I agree with you, John. And Charlie was there.
I'm, I'm just asking, seeing if I can ask a question. If I'm not allowed to ask any questions.
You can ask the questions of public comment.
Okay. Right now?
No, public comment.
Okay.
Public comment comes out at the end.
May I add one thing, though, about the expenses that I'll pay?
No, John. I would ask that you, you say-
Okay, it might be quite relevant. But, okay.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. So any other comments from the board on this request for proposal?
Yes, I was misusing the term moratorium because it's suspension of activities from something. So I will apologize for my misuse of the word moratorium.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Just threw me for a loop.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now to get back to the business at hand. Please talk about the proposal. Any other comments on the proposal? Dan?
The Town Lands Committee spent a lot of time on this and research and stuff. And then they took the time to talk to staff. So I mean, it's a very good effort. Hope everyone's part.
All right. If there's no other further comment?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Is there any public comment?
There are aye.
There are aye?
Yeah, aye.
Haley, aye?
Harokoff, aye.
Harokoff and John, his office, signify. Motion carries?
Thank you.
So there is no public comment?
Public comment is, as I stated to you, comes at the end. There's no public comment on our business. Public comment before we start. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, would you like the odorized grant acceptance?
Oh, thank you.
Connor, will you continue with you? Will you continue, Connor?
The next item up for discussion is, there was a question on whether or not the board would be interested in reviewing the MOUs as was done last year. This time last year, the board reviewed the MOUs, that the memorandums of understanding that the board has. The board has one with conservation and one with recreation. And this would be just a simple discussion on if the board is interested in reviewing those again as they did this time last year.
Is anybody interested in doing that? Dan?
I am. I'd like to table it for the future.
Well, this is just to get it put on the, on the future bill. Is everybody willing to take the time, sit down, discuss those?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. We will do that.
Perfect. Thank you. Next item, this was added over the weekend. So certainly, if, if there isn't agreement from the board to consider this, please let me know. The board has a, a letter of agreement with the New Hampshire Municipal Association to, it's a list of who can ask legal questions. I would like my position and name to be added to that list. That will allow me to ask questions under the group. And as the, as the list is written, the titles of board and commission chairs are listed with the current names. John, the current town administrator, has the ability to update those names, but only the board can add or remove names. And so I'd be interested in adding deputy town administrator in my name.
Dan?
I, I think this is too premature because there's, the chairman has not been selected for next year. It's like, boy, John Wallace indicated he's a no, no longer.
Oh, I, this, this will be discussed on the 25th.
Right, with Connor.
But right, right now, we want to add Connor's name right now to some, wait, I have a, I have a motion. I made the motion.
Chairperson, so I, I as well had the same thought process.
Yes, I know.
However, as select person, air, and realized that what we could do is add the deputy town administrator during this meeting. And then should there be changes that occur that we anticipate, revisit it at the next meeting. And it would allow at least that two-week window. The one thing I will ask is, should, any, because you're in a precarious situation where you report directly to the town administrator, I would ask, should you have a legal concern in reference to that individual that you would definitely recommend to the board before asking that question? Other than that, I would also-
To, to, to answer your question on that, that is the reason why the chair, that's one of the responsibilities the chair has in case we have questions of the TA when, when something is done, that we can go straight to legal advice that way.
Absolutely.
Here's Dan.
Can we put a date on this?
It's going to be discussed again in two weeks.
We're going to talk about, yes, so two weeks, we're two weeks.
Four nine at the bottom.
That's when we approved it.
All right. So all those in favor of putting Connor's name on there, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, this is another item that came up over the weekend. And certainly, if the board isn't interested or willing to attend to it tonight, please let me know if there isn't a consensus from the board. So, the Barrington Village School Parent Teacher Association organization has made a request of the fire chief and the select board. They are sponsoring a raffle, my understanding is for the month of April, to raise money for the funds needed to expand the facilities that they have to offer. As part of that raffle, they are interested in offering a ride in a fire engine. And so, this would need board approval to do that. I think they would be interested in having that raffled off one or two times through one of those calendar-type raffles where they're on the days. I believe there is somebody here tonight, if you had questions specifically from the woman who made the request, and this would need board approval. I did reach out to our insurance carrier. We have a blanket liability waiver that we would have folks sign, and it would be covered under our insurance.
Prom, and additional insurance, have them give us balls to do as additional insurance.
My understanding with talking insurance, our insurance carrier would not require that. If you're interested in that, we can look into it.
I would make, yeah. Select person had a call.
The Barrington Village School, is that, who does ask for this? Is it a for-profit or a not-for-profit entity?
So, the Barrington Village School is a for-profit limited liability company. My understanding is that the PTO is not. It is unclear if the PTO is a registered nonprofit or just a.
So, the parent teacher organization for the Barrington Village School could potentially be, have 501(c)(3) status?
It is unclear to me that they do, but the, they, that is a community organization. The Barrington Village School is a for-profit business.
Okay, and currently, does the Barrington Village School offer before and after school care to Barrington residents?
My understanding is yes, they do.
That was a hot topic.
Is it just for, is it just for?
School age children or earlier?
So, I, there, the representative from the parent teacher organization is here. If you would like to have her address those questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Is anybody in the board object? Please come up.
I'm going to be seated, but she's decided not to.
So, is the PTO organization a 501(c)(3)?
No, but we could try to get it.
Okay, and, and does, does Barrington Village School service school age children?
Yes, we have a library.
Yes.
Right under, they are, but they cannot continue to, because their program is growing so much. It's too many kids in the bathroom, that's where the oldest set of kids are. So, we're trying to expand the second floor.
Isn't it, can't you have more older kids to each care provider in, in a space?
Because the space is right now shared between the four and five-year-olds and the after-school kids. And so, many kids can't, like, right now, after-school, I think there's thirty kids in that bathroom, so it's very cramped.
Okay, so how many kids are you trying to be able to?
I think that she's forty or fifty kids.
About ten or so. Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you, please. Are they all Barrington residents or are they out of town?
Yes, I believe they're.
Thank you, that's why I asked. Do you have an answer for me?
No.
Okay.
And then, I had a question for the fire chief, your person.
If we could just, okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Is anybody object to the chief speaking on this? Is any chief, come up, please?
So, my quick question, chief, because I think fire trucks are really neat and kids really love them. Have we had other opportunities where we have offered this type of service to help out another for-profit or not-for-profit business throughout the year? And how many times has it occurred?
No, this is the, this is the first time we've been asked. Maybe the board and stuff like that.
This is a ride, this is like a ride to school with a fire truck type of thing. It's kind of the latest, greatest thing in raffles. And I can completely understand why kids would love it.
So, any other discussion? Seeing that, I would, I would say in advance that I just think that we're opening up a door that we really don't want to open up. Because what's to preclude, and only because you're here, Mrs. Hatch, turning around and for some reason on her for-profit company asking to give some people a ride for some reason or other? Or having another entity in town doing the same thing? I think it's a can of worms, we really don't want to do. Even though the end result is a little bit different from everybody, I just think that we need to be careful in how we do this. Right now, I know the money is going to be used for a sprinkler system. And with the sprinkler system being put in upstairs, it gives them the automatic space there. Some of the space, they're going to need to increase the program, their program. That being said, do you have any other comments? What would the board like to do? Dan?
Do you understand my request?
About adding as an additionally insured?
I approve, I give you approval insurance.
Yes.
But then you name town as right on your policy.
Yeah, I understand.
Because it's. I'll talk to you later about the library. I'm not going to discuss it, I'm going to nail this. Insurance has bring it up, the library. The, so is there any other discussion on this? Does anybody care to make a motion? Saying no, we'll close the comments. Connor, I guess there isn't enough excitement with the board, and nobody wants to make a motion, so we can move on with the meeting, please.
Be happy to. So, the only other thing, I have two items to discuss in non-public for reputation.
Do you have anything else, sir?
That's everything, thank you.
Suzanne, you're up next, please. I'm sorry, sorry for that.
Do we have, do we have all the information around this, like, between what they're looking to spec out, what's, how it's going to be utilized, what the occupancy, like, total occupancy load is? What, what's the impact of Barrington versus other communities that they may utilize in? Like, I really think that's a really important information for us to.
Do you'd like to reintroduce the idea? I think they have a ton of new creations that they have.
I think that the other information necessary, when you talk about the sprinkler system or what have you, I'm not going to put anybody on, but if Connor would like to speak to that sprinkler system, you may. If not, you may not.
So, my understanding is the, the folks who are in the Barrington Village School have been looking at options for expanding, understanding that there's a need in town to include some creative options, not just expanding their own building. Looking at school facilities and offering to run a similar program in infrastructure that already exists. The option to expand is an expensive one, just given the building and fire codes. And so, the preliminary work that they've done on that has resulted in the information that they would need a sprinkler system that might cost up to a hundred thousand dollars. So, the, I'm not specifically familiar with what level of detailed plans that they have, but understanding that there, there is a need and that the, the expansion would require a sprinkler system per the code. I think the fundraising effort was a way to help the community get behind the need that exists for, for this business. So, to your specific question about the details of plans, I don't know how far along it is, but far enough along to know that, what they need from the, from the fire code.
Also, if they're going to have the raffle or whatever, they'll have to go through, I think the contact person is Suzanne on the raffles, I'm not sure, but I know it has to go through the office. Select person had a call.
So, I, I happen to also have read a lot of the traffic surrounding before and after school care. And from a policy perspective, there's not a lot I think we can do. But, it occurred to me that what we could encourage is, there's two very good safe sitter programs. One of them run through Frisbee Hospital, another one that's run through Wentworth Douglas Hospital for children age eleven and up. That teaches various levels of safety, life-saving measures, and within an eight-hour span of time, certifies children to become safe sitters. And in many ways, allows the opportunity for children to really slowly mature into roles where they know when to open a front door, what to do with strangers in the yard, how to respond if their younger sibling is choking. And so, well, I hear what parents are experiencing. One of the things we could certainly do is reach out and see if maybe in conjunction with the rec department, we could bring on site one of the safe sitter programs that could be potentially helpful for that age group.
I believe the library.
Okay.
All right, being said, Suzanne?
I have a denial of an elderly exemption for you to sign. The asset level was too high. I have a payment number four. Vendor manifest dated March seventh and payroll manifest dated March third. And I want to know if you had any comments on the memo I sent to you with a person, property owner requesting a waiver of interest on the land use change tax.
Is that something we want to talk in public or something we should discuss in non-public?
The board could discuss it in general terms in public, and if the board was interested in speaking specifically about anything that would, that would affect somebody's reputation, we'd need to do it in non-public.
All right. The one quick question I have for Suzanne in reference to the waiver on the land use change tax is, is this a one-time occurrence with that particular entity, individual, or business?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
Can we discuss it?
Certainly can, this is going to be up to the table, this is going to be non-public. Suzanne, anything else?
Oh, that's all I have.
Can I have one more quick question?
Please.
The assessed level of the home that we're denying the elderly exemption on, what percentage is it where it would be compliant?
A home doesn't count to their assets.
Okay.
Only a second home.
Ah, understood, very good, thank you.
So, we finish the stack, we have old business. Under old business, we have select board election duties. Currently.
Chairperson.
I know, I know. If select person Harakoff wants to go over the times originally set up, I would appreciate that aspect of the start.
Are you speaking of our duties tomorrow?
Yes, I am speaking of that time.
So, it's my understanding that select person Hatch will be on site at 8:00 AM for sure here.
So, yeah, you will be.
That's fine. And that Chairperson Bailey and myself will cover from four to eight as ballots are getting counted and being able to certify, which I think is the best use of time. And that the two incumbents who are running unopposed and not standing in the snow for twelve hours to run for volunteer office. Sorry, I had to put that out there, Matt. That, that they will either have pro temps, but they will not be participating anywhere near where, other than their own single.
Any other comments? Seeing there, is there anything else for old business? Seeing have nothing else for old business, we go to new business. We already approved the easements that was necessary. We did the Forrester, and we did the decision for the MOUs. Is there any other new business with select person Harakoff?
I would like to request based upon, and this will really depend upon outcomes from tomorrow, but I, I would like to explore and talk at the next select board meeting about the current elderly exemption levels and potentially revisiting them. One of the areas that were discussed in depth, both the deliberative session and on a lot of the social media that I've read, is the concern for those living on fixed incomes. And not that I am necessarily making a motion that we make that change at this point, but I would like to potentially look at it for the business.
Can I ask a favor?
Yes.
Can we put it after the 25th? Because right now, the 25th is being backed up with everything in hopes of.
Certainly.
I think it has to go before town meeting vote. I think it has to be a town meeting vote.
Yeah, we can look at, we can.
So, we have time to explore it, but I would like to definitely explore it based upon.
Give us a head start on the budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can do it, put it aside, and bring it back up to the budget. I agree with you.
Very good.
Dan, you have anything else for new, for new business?
No, we can put it on the bottom list so we can revisit later on.
I think that's what we're thinking, right? Okay.
Okay, seeing as how there isn't any other new business, the next is the select person's report. Somebody change the order. Well, Dan, you first.
I had very lucky. I had Conservation Thursday. I was very lucky, I had Conservation Thursday night, and they discussed a lot with the goodwill and other projects coming forth. And they addressed some of the concerns. And then, at the land, town lands committee, we went over the update from the TA and assistant TA, and then the draft is up that was presented tonight. We looked into that, at other lands up, and then two, they're going to be coming forth with the Berry River Road and Long Shores, they can subdue Connor and staff. So, that is going to be a recommendation coming up soon, so.
Hope it's not the 25th, go ahead.
I think he hasn't said that, I believe. But I'll make sure if they want to present it, do it after 25.
We, we have so much put, put up, go to the 25th, so we'll go from there.
They could recommend what to sell?
That's what's going to be in the recommendation, yes.
That's what they're going to do?
Yeah.
Well, there is a lot of homework, they checked with all avenues, the real estate agent for select person Harakoff. And then, they checked with, they checked with a real estate person, looked at value, tried to market it. They covered all the avenues.
I'd be interested to see that report. Anything else there? Select person Harakoff.
So, one other thing, I'm sorry, one other thing I wanted to discuss under new business, if I could, before we get to the board reports? Because it does involve part of.
Is everybody understanding?
I would like to recommend that the deputy town administrator and the town administrator get together and write some very specific internal policies surrounding work that is to be done by the public works highway department or any of the commissions that exist in town. And the reason that I request this is, either I misheard or someone misspoke at the last meeting, I'll give it that way. But it caused quite a lot of work and researching, some internal, internal billing that had taken place. And I think that in order to alleviate that going forward, because I think it was always everyone's intention to be ethical and on the up and up with everything, but we don't have a process in place. And I think if we had one, it would certainly alleviate some of what occurred in question at internal billing.
I understand the request, and we'll bring policy recommendations back to the board.
All right, thank you very much. Now, moving back to select and support, select person Harakoff, is there any question?
I'd like to add on to that too, in time, so.
Well, I think we'll have a proposal brought forward.
Be the one who thinks some, has some suggestions, please submit them to John and Connor, they can take it from there and beat it. That'll be, be the board to do that, I guess.
So, I have not, I have not had the pleasure of attending a rec department meeting.
Monday.
Thank you for your, thank you for your report. I will move on since, since the person Hatch. Select person Hatch.
Well, we had, we had a hearing scheduled, and they called it off. They called it off, so there was no, there's no hearing scheduled for the zoning board. One thing I will say, and it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning board, but is there something on this, which we're just discussing, was internal billing? Is there anything that we should know? I wasn't here, and I, as we work for the town at times, it's kind of nice to keep up on what's being discussed.
At the last meeting, there was a discussion on rec's repayment to Peter. Earlier in the year, if you remember, is that the rec department had told us that any bills that were submitted, they were going to turn around and pay. During the course of the last meeting, there was two amounts mentioned, and where they were mentioned was questionable, but they were there. I spent, as other select person has spent time looking at it, found the two times it was noted, and I gave those times out to select person Harakoff. I said, when I had met with the rec director this week, I said in passing, but not in writing, the times are on it, and I also gave it to Connor and also to John Scrub those times. And so, what happened is there's, there's been some confusion as to the amount of money. So, that's what started the ball rolling. And since that time, it has been recommended that maybe we consider an hourly rate that be paid for the work that Peter does for different groups. And what was brought up tonight is to say that what groups need to have restitution for is what's going to be discussed in that policy that's being brought forward. So, that's, that's where it stands right now.
I just, I was looking for it as you were talking, and I don't see it, and I just was.
We brought it up on the new business, yeah.
Yeah, we went back to new business for the, and they, and, well, we'll wait till we get to that discussion, and we'll go from there. So, that's.
I just, I will say it again, and I constantly am saying this. I get rid up here.
Yes, please.
This is a five-member board, and I think five members should know what's going on at all the time. And I have a full respect for Tracy, she's very knowledgeable, very smart, but I still think that you have five members, and you need to know what's going on.
And that's why, like I said, we're going to bring that up, and we'll sit down and discuss that aspect now.
Okay, as I say, we have no meeting, but a zoning board.
Thank you. Dan, you have another comment?
No, I wasn't started last week at the meeting, so that's what you need to kind of get updated, and maybe, well, at a lot of time, you'll have information so you know what's going on. Connor can do that for you.
It was two hours and thirty-seven minutes.
I know, I thought. Connor, I think you said that.
Thank you for your comments. Select person, Dan.
I have no updated report because I left the wee hours Wednesday morning, so I wasn't at Tuesday night's meeting.
So, you put that together for your team?
I did, I asked, I went to British Columbia skiing ahead of being. But I came back for today.
So, I, I also do not have a report, so that takes care of the select's report. I'll move forward now with public comments. Is there any public comment? Oh, please mark this on the calendar. Seeing as how there isn't any, I will turn around and entertain a motion going to non-public.
Make a motion going to non-public for land reputation.
Just, just reputation.
Okay, we don't have to talk about lands this week.
See, we do have one section of the land for this here, for the.
We would be going into non-public to protect somebody's reputation.
Yeah, that's what you're doing. Okay. So, I have a roll call vote, Bailey, aye?
Hatch, aye. Harakoff, aye.
Aye or aye.
We have five and O, thank you very much. We will not be coming back out of public, out of non-public. We will only come back to turn around and set the timeframe, we're going to seal the minutes, and then we're going to adjourn.